Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws in 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on March 5, 2018, and April 26, 2018, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue on March 7, 2018, and April 28, 2018. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on March 5, 2018, and April 26, 2018. Mr. Boyce, are you prepared to take the roll call?
(inaudible)
Here.
Mrs. Capiello?
Here.
Mr. Corolla?
Here.
Mrs. Nighavon?
Here.
Mr. Flavin?
Here.
Mr. Rosen?
Here.
Mrs. Sotera?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Messinger. Here. All right, if everybody would please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, moving on. There are no minutes to approve. Were there any communications received in the board offices over the last week that we need to know about?
Yes, sir.
All right then, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Sampson for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Messinger. So, this evening is the formal budget presentation from Mr. Boyce, and, you know, this is, I believe, Mr. Boyce's 11th budget here at the Freehold Regional High School District. And I think that, over the years, one of the things that he does very, very well is to take some very complex processes and break them down in a way that's very manageable for the board to digest, the public to digest, and frankly, myself to digest. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Boyce.
(inaudible). So, I've had the opportunity recently to work with some graduate students in the area of school finance, and I'm always pleased to validate, I believe, that there is a common understanding of the purpose of education. Where I tend to spend most of my time with them is the process by which that understanding has some self-adaptable programs and services that can measurably satisfy the very purpose that they're for. Determine the aggregate will of the community, design programs that meet those expectations, and then deliver those programs effectively. That's the process. This district and many others do that through a formal strategic planning process. And as one strategic plan sunsets for us, another is up and underway, and this budget provides for the core areas, the strategies, and the actions, and the continuation of the momentum that the district has under that planning line. The budget for Freehold Regional is altogether roughly $210 million. That's several different funds. Ninety-six percent of that, or 201 million of it, is the general fund. There are two other smaller funds, one is the special revenue fund, and that's for pure marked funds, mostly federal programs, also some from state and even some local grants that are carved out very specifically purpose. The third fund is roughly $5 million, and that's our debt service fund. The debt service fund is payment on debt from a bond issued, our own remaining bond issued about nearly 20 years ago. But by and large, the annual school budget is housed in the general fund, so that's where we're going to spend our time. So, as you can see, so, a split pie is really two different sections. Seventy percent of our appropriation is spent on programs and services directly that directly impact the student, whether that's regular education, special education, also includes our alternative program, athletics, inter-curricular. All of those are considered direct instruction under the state's coding law, actually, the national coding law. Also included here are support services. So, there are student support services, and there are programs. Student support services are those things that are necessary to put our students in the right place, in the right condition, to accept direct instruction. There are things like guidance, child study, the nurse's office. Program supports, all of the curriculum writing, the staff development that go into the improvement of the program. So, all of that, seventy percent, the larger portion of that pie, directly contributes to the quality of education. Remaining thirty percent, facilities, transportation administration. That's essentially the infrastructure necessary to bring students to school, to have a safe, comfortable environment for them to learn, and with the administrative responsibilities that all school districts have. And then there's also a small slice of that that's capital. So, overall, this year's budget has about a 2% increase in spending. Now, schools are personnel intended to be, so better than 70% of the total spend is these people. That's salaries, salaries and wages, and benefits. About the increase of 2% is just under $4 million. And of that $4 million, seventy percent of that number is for those people in those two categories. Salary and wage categories increase by 1%, and then benefits catch up the rest. The remaining areas are really in two different spots. Tuition, we send some students where we cannot meet their needs here individually to places to school for the handicap, so that's also seeing some increase, and also in the area of transportation, which has seen increases in recent years, increases that are becoming increasingly difficult to accommodate. We have a project, there is one capital project represented, but it is a handout on the web with its video that should also be the same handout. It is a lot of the detailed information that's represented in this overall client chart. And one of the items that's separated out in there is a $1 million project for the Manalukin High School Auditorium. So, let me just make a comment about the referendum. About a month ago, we had a conversation here in this room about an upcoming referendum. It's October 2, and it's a very important part of our overall coordination effort to consider the programs that we need to provide and the funding that's available to us. So, that referendum is in four main buckets: security, modernized construction spaces, athletic facilities, and then also regards some infrastructure, like paving, that type of thing. That information is available on the website, but that is linked to this budget because there's a limited ability for school districts, this school district, most school districts, to provide for large-scale capital improvements within an annual operating budget. So, the lay of the land has changed pretty recently, and I'll touch on that when we get to the revenue side. The $1 million for the Manalukin Auditorium is something that was originally considered in the referendum, but we had some parameters that we needed to pick there with our expiring debt and with the existing bond issue. We wanted to coordinate our efforts, and we set the parameters of two-thirds, one-third, as you know, two-thirds for investments in the district and the remaining three to allow the tax reduction associated with that debt expiry. But there were a number of things that we were not able to fit into that referendum and still meet the parameters, and one of them was Manalukin High School Auditorium. It made sense to remove that and fund it separately because it's an area that's where Manalukin is different than the other schools. So, the majority of that money is associated with HVAC, air conditioning, which now does not happen. Then there's also renovations, modest renovations to flooring and seating as well. But that's the only capital project that's included in this budget. So, that's a high-level snapshot. Like I said, the handout supplements that with more detail information. The fair question that I get from members of the community is that, you know, that's good information, but how do we know that a district is spending the right amount of money? And there are data points out there, most of them are housed on the state of New Jersey website, that seeks to compare spending, you know, real apples-to-apples web. So, what you have here is, this is a representation of, in a few different ways, of the 31 high school districts in the state of New Jersey, high school only districts. So, the apples-to-apples, you know, the education of an elementary versus middle versus high school student, they're different, cost-wise, they're different. So, for us to really see where we match up on spending, best place is to look at those other high school only districts, and there are 31. The average of those, I set as an anchor, it's a red line that goes across the graph at 100%, just as a point of reference to see where we land in relation to that. So, of the 31 districts, nine of them are of the same district factor that is the socioeconomic status of the community, that the state's organizing groups, districts by socioeconomic. So, they are, in essence, our sibling districts, same type of community, same type of education, same type of resources to support education. That's represented by the first column, I'm sorry, by the gray column, the middle column there. And then of those 31, five are in Monmouth County, so there are five high school districts in Monmouth County only, and the average of those is also an included dollar. So, what you can see is we fare very well in the spending metrics. I usually talk about this in very limited capacity because so many have the story. Like, the objective of public education is not to spend as little as possible, is to provide the appropriate education as efficiently as possible. So, this information in and of itself isn't the whole story. You would need some performance metrics, you know, to really understand regional capacity. And I think that's where this district really shines, because we have the economy of scale, because we have the kind of resources at a larger community, the eight municipalities that we cover, that we can offer programs and services that other districts can't, certainly other municipalities can't. So, this is independent information, it's audited, and it's compiled by the state. This is the most recent information that they had available on there. So, that's an overview of the appropriations and where the money is spent. The resources necessary to provide that breaks down like this, and again, the handout has more detail information. But as you can see, you know, the lion's share of our district comes from the property cabinet. So, 26% of it is from state aid. So, if you really look at school districts across the state at this type of breakdown, where we have 26%, that number is moving all over the place, on a district-by-district basis. And the reason is that state aid is distributed primarily based on wealth indicators. So, a community will receive state aid based on its population and its needs, but also based on what's remaining after the community's ability to pay is taken into consideration. So, you'll see districts that receive very little, 1% or 2%, you'll see districts that receive 90%. So, there's a variable there. Property taxes are the backfill, as the state looks at it according to the funding formula. And out of property tax levy, this represents a 2% increase in our property tax levy. So, property taxes for the last eight years have been under a cap system. That cap system says, okay, you can increase your total levy by no more than 2%, although there are some exceptions that would allow you to go beyond that, increased enrollment, healthcare costs, that sort of thing. Those together would be the most tax-dated exception figure. We have eligibility to go beyond the 2% for healthcare costs in excess of certain thresholds to about 2.5%. We're taking the option to bank that cap, and here's how that works. So, there's a 2% cap, but the state has said that if you want to levy less than that, you can take the difference and bank it and consider using it in each of the two subsequent districts. Now, over the eight years that this cap system has been in place, this district has gone to 2%, gone to less than 2%, went to zero. Its access to bank cap has gone over 2%. It's allowed bank cap to lapse beyond the 2%. The decisions were made and are to continue to be made according to what the conditions of the community are at that given time, the program, and also the overall economic conditions. So, the decision this year is to bank the availability of another $670,000 of property taxes and to be considered for use in the future, either of the two subsequent budgets. State aid, there's been a lot of discussion over state aid. And with a change in administration, this is very often the time that you see any significant increase in one way or the other. Those discussions will conclude, and that will be part of Governor Murphy's final budget. The initial budget offered by Governor Murphy has us at flat state funding, and we've been flat for a number of years now. I think that we are vulnerable, and I think it's something that Mr. Sampson and I are highly aware of and keeping a very close eye on that. But for the budget as it stands right now, it includes staff, flat, state aid, and more to be determined as the state continues through this process. So, the property tax, the remaining property tax, the 2% increase, here's the unique thing about regional, is that unlike school districts that represent just one municipality, it's fairly predictable as the levy increases, you can expect tax rates to move accordingly. With a regional district, there are eight communities, and the way that's calculated is not only related to what's happening in your own community, but what's also happening in the other seven communities and where you stand in relation to that. The result of it is that it's very abrupt. There's ups, there's downs, year over year, somewhat unpredictable, on how the total tax levy is allocated to the eight towns. Let me show you what that looks like. Here's over the last four years, those are percentage increases and decreases by town. So, you can see that it's difficult to predict what the impact would be in any one given year when the movements of change in percentage share allocation was so followed. What's considered, and the state dictates, here's how you carve up the tax level. And they look at primarily two things, property wealth and school-aged kids. And they also break down school-aged kids by students in elementary school and students in high school. And those things drive what that percentage share is. So, for your individual community, you may have a good track record, you may have, you know, a difficult track record, but there are things that are pushing that. Farmingdale, for example, has seen increases since they have such low enrollment, you know, just movement of a few kids pushes their tax share dramatically in one direction or the other. But most of the districts have seen their share of ups and downs. Reading is what this budget represents. So, let me move to that slide of the increases and the decreases associated with this budget. Again, I think it's important to look at it in context over the last few years and just to understand overall what's the district-wide change in the tax levy. That'll give you a better feel for the district's performance. So, for tax levy, there is one note here, and I'll just make a quick comment, relatively insignificant, but just so that the tax rate is tied in. There is a, this is personal property tax, and that is for rising fees, certain municipalities or equipment that they have within that municipality that they'll pay tax on, and that comes directly off the tax rate. So, in a very minor way, four or five communities are seeing, their tax rates are mildly adjusted to the good when that happens. But I've removed that so it's a real apples-to-apples to look at the two tax rates year over year. So, this is the tax rate, the tax impact of this year. I'll open it up to some questions or comments, if anybody does have them, but what this budget does is it does provide the resources necessary to continue the momentum under our student population. Within those appropriations in partnership to block schedule, the expansion of our ID program, those are the things that have been identified as important items that we want to really target, the resources that we have available. It's also important to remember that this budget is linked, tied to the success of the referendum. Without a successful referendum, we will not be able to do some of those things that will really improve the quality of the education our students receive, but will also crowd out funding that will be necessary for some of the infrastructure stuff that is included in the referendum. So, word on that. This district's been very proactive about that. We set aside fund capital improvements plan available. We also undertook a large energy savings improvement plan, which is self-funding through energy savings, and that's without issuing debt housed within the confines of the annual school budget. Referendum once passed and a bond issued as a result of that are not housed in the general fund, they're in the debt service fund. Look, the energy savings improvement plan that we did was better than $20 million worth of infrastructure work that we were able to accomplish under that, and funded through the energy savings that those improvements created. So, that was a very successful program, but it brings a point where we're out of options to fund some of these large ticket items. The referendum is linked to this budget and eventually to the state. And finally, the last thing to be very aware of is state aid and how that kind of progress at the state level. Like I said, we're vulnerable here, and, you know, we'll wait and see how that shakes out, but it's something that we're very worried about when we're still in the process. So, that's an overview of the budget, and additional information on this is in the second handout, and I hope that we can reach out and see if we have any other questions. Let me first open up to the board, any comments or questions?
Sean, you're coming to state aid to be flat. What happens if state aid comes in less than what it's been expected, it's been at, and we get less of the state, would that affect the municipalities and the tax levy?
Well, that's an option. There'll be options of tax levy, there'll be options of budget cuts, or some combination thereof. Under the funding formula right now, the state's formula says that we are undertaxed and overfunded state aid lines. And I know that's difficult to hear, that this community would be considered undertaxed according to their funding formula, which, as with any formula, it's going to have its shortcomings, and I think certainly this one does as well. But to the extent state aid is reduced, we'll make those decisions in what we all feel are in the best interest of the district.
Actually, I didn't have a question, but more a comment. It's sort of tied into what Mrs. Sotera just asked about, that when I first read this document before the Finance Committee hearing 10 days ago, I did think the most impressive thing about it was actually in the beginning of the budget where you talked about state funding. I think you did do a phenomenal job of explaining how the state determines how much we get, and one of the things I actually highlighted here is what you had just mentioned about what the state considers, how we are undertaxed. And it is good reading. The shame of it is, you know, 99.9% of the population isn't going to read it, even though it does impact them so much. But I just wanted to compliment you that your state funding paragraphs are extremely well-written and very easy to understand, so I think you should be complimented about Does anybody else have any questions?
Sean, what was the date the state has to let us know by?
There is no date, you know, there is no date certain. June 30, I guess, if the state budget needs to be finalized by June 30, then perhaps any change will be worked out by then. I suppose that they could leave just the total funding for school districts in tax in that state budget and have more time to determine how to allocate that pot of money. Whether or not the total pot of money is going to change, that also relates to these. If you look at the state budget, roughly a third of the state budget is for schools, a third, it's a huge part of their budget. And that includes direct aid to schools, as you see here. It also includes pension payments on behalf of schools and other associated cost budget. Their burden, their budget's burden of school aid and school costs is certainly significant conversation.
Just to add one point, and, you know, Sean lays this out very, very clearly, and we've been talking, some of the proposals around addressing school funding since Murphy's taken office and the sort of battle lines that have been drawn between State Senator Sweeney and the governor and some other factions, some of those proposed solutions really gloss over the complexity of the issue, and they do it in a way that could be very dangerous to us, and we recognize that, and not really acknowledging that at the end of the day, they back into their numbers and retrofit the formula in some ways around, you know, whether it's, however they determine the property value, equalized value, whatever. And Sean's done a phenomenal job of helping me and helping the district testify, advocate with legislators, and make clear points about, you know, districts like ourselves who are candidly delivering an incredibly high-quality experience for our students and doing it for less of a cost than most of our neighbors, even K-8 neighbors, right, that don't have the high schools. And making that point to, you know, the powers that be is an ongoing process that we continue to do. And so, to your point, Michael, about how Sean's clarity around how we arrive at those numbers, so we've used that to also educate legislators and other folks about the formula itself and some of the dangers in some of the proposed solutions. So, Sean's been terrific in helping streamline that conversation.
And I do want to point out, one of the things that might get lost is that over the last two years, there has been a reduction in teaching positions.
Yeah, so, this budget, it's interesting, we didn't note it, but last budget, you know, the initial proposal was for seven positions, we ultimately reduced eight. This one, the initial proposal, is for six. We feel that when we're done looking at the... We feel that when we're done looking at the sorting out staffing in its final phases, we think that it will be more than six as well. But when we discuss that, you know, we always want to err on the side of caution so that we don't overestimate it and then say, oh, well, we only, you know, so we try to be conservative when we put the budget together and what we're looking at when we first do that, but it's more often than not more than what is indicated in the final tally.
I guess there are no other questions. Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments for Mr. Boyce or anyone else All right then, we are going to move on to E4, which is an adoption of the 2018-19 annual school budget. Anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the 2018-19 annual budget? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Can you please call the role, Mr. Boyce?
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes. Now, I know nobody had any questions about the budget, but any public participation on any other issues for the Board of Education to consider? All right then, any old business? Any new business? Does anybody want to put forth a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Would you like to take the role, Mr. Boyce? Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.